Okay, I think Kenny's gonna do it.
Okay, it's one o'clock. It's Wednesday, October the 27th, 2021. And I'm gonna call this Commissioner's meeting to order us a special call meeting. And I guess with that, I'll turn it over to Bob and let him go ahead and tell us what he's got on his mind today.
Good morning, or I guess it's now afternoon. I've been in meetings all morning, so I apologize for having to do this work in this manner. I prefer to be face-to-face with you, and I'm sure y'all would like to have that as well. This is the travel time and the short time we've got available to do the work. I just, the only way we're gonna get the ground covered is probably doing this work remotely. That being said, I'm gonna share the screen with you. Can you see the map?
Yes.
This is your existing boundaries with the 2020 data laid in. This is essentially, the first question is, how much, how balanced or unbalanced are you in terms of population? Hale County had lost since 2010 about 1,496 people. Now, this, these numbers, I'm excluding the federal and state prison population. I do that normally, we can do it the other way, including that population, but since those folks that are housed in those state and federal felony facilities cannot vote, including them in the redistricting will skew the demographics. If you're, so, you know, in a population the size of Hale County, and I don't know exactly how many off the top of my head, hang on just a minute. I may have that data relatively easily available. You have 3,751 detainees in state or felony prison. We do not exclude the county jail, for example. Under that standard, your deviation, if you include that population, would be 17% out of balance. But counties normally opt to exclude the prison population, so that, your deviation is still above 10% at 12.35%. So that means you have to redraw your boundaries to accommodate that imbalance. Precinct 1 is underpopulated by 455 people, or 5.86%, and Precinct 3 is overpopulated by 504, or 6.49%. So you add that overpopulated, most overpopulated Precinct 3 to the most underpopulated Precinct 1, add those two percentages together, disregarding the plus or minus sign, and you get a 12.35% deviation. So you've gotta bring that down under 10. Ideally, you would bring it down closer, below 5% or so. 2 and 3 are also overpopulated or underpopulated to the about eight percentage points, and we recommend that at the end, you be well below, as close to none as you can get, but certainly under 5% deviation. So, that means that we're going to have to look at where that population, where those precincts abut each other, particularly between the two that are most out of balance, 1 and 3. And because of the way population, most of the county's population candidly is there in Plainview. So that is where we would normally look to move population between Precinct 1, underpopulated, and Precinct 3, overpopulated. But precincts 2 and precincts 4 are also more out of balance than you would be comfortable with. So it really is going to affect all four precincts. Now, unless I hear otherwise, I recommend doing that work inside the city where the population is the most dense, because that means you can move fewer blocks and achieve balance quicker by moving that population than you can moving the other. Now, I pulled up the city boundaries. You see Seth Ward up here. It's, it's not a city, but it's called an SMA, Statistical Metropolitan Area, because there's quite a bit of population out there, but Seth Ward is not part of the city. But it shows up, you can't be confused. You see this name Seth Ward and the name Plainview, that's labeling those county areas. So, is there anybody that would suggest we need to look at adjusting the rural lines, or are you comfortable making these changes inside Plainview?
Bob, personally, I, I like your suggestion of doing it within the city limits of Plainview. I, I'm not sure how the other fellows here feel, but that would, that would be better to me.
Well, y'all are probably closer to having a quadrant system than most any other county I'm familiar with, and that's kind of been deliberate over the years. I've done county, the county's work is to try to leave those areas pretty much intact as they are, although there's, y'all know better than I do, there's not more roads than who does it, but there's a lot of spin-off effects. So you wanted to kind of move along this line. We can go in there and see how many people are in those areas. And it, I don't know how far we, there you go. You can see the numbers pop up of how many people are involved there. There's very few people, but are road miles, so I'm not suggesting we can't make some changes, but I would recommend that we, that's a lot more moving of territory that doesn't adjust your population much. But I just wanted to kind of let you know that, that can be done while we're at it, but typically, we would recommend doing the work where the population is the most dense here in the city.
I think you'd have to move those boundaries an awful lot to make any difference in adjustment, Bob.
I do too. I mean, that's my opinion, but it's your, your county, so don't let me drive you where you don't want to go. I had prepared, and I think I had forwarded to you what I call a Plan X. Did you get that?
I did not. We're not familiar with it, Bob.
Sometimes I have it, I don't go, I keep, I'm having to do too many counties, so I lose track of where I've done where, but I want to pull up a, a plan that I, you know, I know Plainview, I say I know it, I've been gone from there for 30 years, so I mean, generally, I don't know the, the city and the county as it now exists. My memories from 30 years ago aren't a valid basis to do much work on, but I want to show you an option that I have sort of put together that tries to accommodate the needs to balance the population and also to comply with the Voting Rights Act. So what, let me explain this map. It's a little complicated, and what you're seeing map-wise, the, these gray or these lines that you see here, those are box boundaries. And so what I've done is tried to move areas from one precinct to the other to accommodate population. So you can see I've probably taken population out of Precinct 4, which is overpopulated, and moved it into Precinct 2, which is underpopulated. So this area here, and that's north of 24th Street, and it goes up to 28th Street, and from probably Joliet over to Quincy, north of that 24th Street line, and also about two or three census blocks, north of 28th Street up to 29th, between Fresno, El Paso, over to 27th. So that's one area where I move some population. Also moves the population, if I recall correctly. Yeah, along here between 3 and 1, shedding population out of 3 and moving it over into 1. And that's in the area from, that yellowish line is the new boundary, that's Smythe, and I wish I could do it a little more clear than 194, or what is that street in town? I'm not seeing a label other than Highway 194.
Okay, Bob, I live at 2205 West 12.
Okay.
And that's on Precinct 4, did you move that line, or I can't tell?
Pretty close.
These three diamonds are income of residences, so I'm trying to keep, not move anybody out of their precinct. It looks like yours, this is your precinct, right? I mean, 4?
Yes.
That is, 12th Street is on the north, and 11th and Utica.
So that really didn't, that really didn't change anything?
Right. I don't think we moved anybody, affected anybody based on the data I have. Now, that's, I want to make sure that I, I know, no change in this Precinct 1, I don't know if that's a, or JP. There's no change for this Precinct 3, there's no change in this residence up in 4, and the others are out more in the rural area, I think, down here in, down here, I suppose. Does that look about right?
The only, Bob, this is Hale County. The only one I was wondering, because we've actually moved from that west of town to south of town on that second road, but I, I don't, none of that's gonna affect me.
Yeah, I didn't move anything out here, so as long as you stay, you know, in.
I'm in, still in the rural country.
Yeah. I don't think it's gonna affect anybody, but that's why I wanted to ask you. One of the questions I have for everybody.
The only one I see it even close to would be Jimmy, and I, I think yours would be.
Just barely.
Yeah, it's gonna be close to his, but I think it'd be, be okay. Jimmy Kelly's in that.
What, what do you, where do you live, Jimmy, on?
2205 West 12.
22.
He said I was still in it.
Yeah, you're still in it, it's, it's close. The way I saw it, it was.
Which I was close to.
Where am I looking at, in town or out of the rural area?
In town, in town on 12th Street, right off of Smythe, where you was talking about off of Smythe.
Well, it's way over in Burnham.
Yeah, but he went west there.
As long as he didn't go west of Quincy.
He did go west of Quincy.
If this plan were to be given consideration, let me get some data for you. The deviation would drop from 12% to 1.3%, and Precinct 1 would be underpopulated by 6 people, 2 would be underpopulated by 3, Precinct 3 would be overpopulated by 55, and Precinct 4 would be, by, underpopulated by 47. So the range is 1.3%.
Bob, I'm sorry, but would you give me them numbers again?
Yeah, I can send this to you in an Excel spreadsheet, but the population of Precinct 1 would be a total of 7,751, which is 6 people below the ideal, the ideal size. You take the population that you're counting, in this case, 31,026, that's the county population, less the jail population, and you divide that by 4, the 4 single-member district commissioners precincts, the judge is elected at large, so you don't divide by 5, you divide by 4. That gives you an ideal precinct size of 7,757, and you determine how close you are, plus or minus, to that ideal. Precinct 2 would be actual population 7,754, or 3 people below the ideal. Precinct 3 would be 7,811, or 55 people above the ideal, and 4 would be 7,710, or 47 people below the ideal, but the range of deviation would be 1.3%. I tried to come up under 5%, so we're well below that. At the same time, you have to continue to try to keep the, very close of the percentage of ethnic representation that was existing in the last pre-cleared plan. Let me pull up our plan's last pre-cleared plan. One moment, please. All right. 10 years ago, your minority representation in Precinct 1, voting age population in Precinct 1 was 57% Hispanic. And in Precinct 2, it was 69%. In the plan that we're looking at here, your Hispanic percentage, the population has declined overall, but your population of his voting age Hispanic voter, potential voters, voting age potential, is 60.3% in 1, and 71.59% in 2. So the viability of the potential for minority candidates to have some success electing remains strong in those two precincts, and candidly, remains pretty strong in all of the county. The whole county now is 60.48% Hispanic. The Anglo population is 33% overall. So that's a, you know, that's a significant population demographic change from when I grew up in Plainview, but you've got to keep your eye on that, Bob, and I think this proposed plan probably does that. I'm going to unclutter, do y'all still see this map, with point, Precinct 2 at 04, Precinct 3 at .7?
Yes.
Yes.
All right. I'm gonna kind of declutter it a little bit, so you can see the boundaries maybe a little better. I'm gonna take out the streets as well, so it's, is it, it's different, but if I try to keep it as straightforward and as kind of simpler, it's actually simpler than all you have now in terms of boundary. So I don't know, that, this plan would work legally, it's just a question, does it work for you locally, or would you like to explore other possible configurations?
Well.
I need to remind you that we need to adopt something by the 13th of November.
Again, referring back to something you said a while ago, you said the total population of Hale County is 60, 64.8% Hispanic?
Of the, of the adjusted population, that means when I say adjusted, that's the total population, which is 32,522, and we've subtracted out the jail populations, so that leaves a total adjusted population of 31,026 people.
Yes.
And you find that by 4, you get an ideal precinct of 7,757.
Correct, I understand that, but what are our demographics populations of the Hispanic?
All right, the Anglo population of the adjusted population is 33.07%. The black population is 3.4%, American Indian, and Native American, .32%. Asian population, .46%, Hispanic population, 60.48%, Hawaiian or Pacific Islanders, .10%, and then we have other, .22%, and multi, 1.96. The other and the multi are people who report more than one ethnicity, or an ethnicity not in the major groupings that I went through. Now, that's the raw total population. Of the voting age population, those percentages are 37.52% Anglo, 3.58% Black, and 55.83% Hispanic, voting age. You will notice that the Hispanic voting age population drops from 60.48 in the total down to 55.83, while the Anglo population climbs or increases from 33.07 total to 37.5% voting age. That reflects the demographic difference between Anglo population and Hispanic population, and that the Hispanic population is demographically younger, meaning fewer voting age people out of a similarly sized sample. The black population also climbs slightly. Where the Anglo population climbs by basically four full percentage points, the black population climbs from four, or 3.4 to 3.5, so, you know, basically two tenths of a percent, but the Anglo, the Hispanic population drops a full five percentage point. So that Anglo and white populations are demographically older than Hispanic population, meaning fewer voter-eligible. Hispanic populations also register and turn out at lower percentages than the corresponding Anglo and black population, so their ability to elect from a district needs to be significantly higher than a simple majority. And so that's why I point your voting age population in Districts 1 and 2 are both, the voting age population Hispanic in Precinct 1 is 60.3%, and in 2, it's 71.59%. So those would be considered viable politically, meaning they have a better chance than even given a good candidate, to elect a minority candidate. If you were to draw those lines where that percentage dropped below probably 60%, you possibly would run into some chat. So I'm comfortable that legally and numerically, and that this worked for, as far as I'm concerned.
Well, I, I think I am too, Bob. I'd like to see some of these lines on paper and, and give everybody an opportunity just to review them a little bit, and.
Okay. Here's what I can do, I can send you sort of some individualized maps of each precinct as it joins the next adjacent precinct, and think I can limit that a level where the streets can be seen. Let me turn that street layer on. In other words, I, I can send you for public hearing purposes, a large-scale map, getting it to you in time, you know, do the, to just do your study. I'd almost have to zoom in at this scale so that you could see the map with street labels. And so that makes it hard to kind of go around, but I can walk around the boundaries of each Commissioner precinct in town and give you thumbnail little portraits like this, but that's about the best I can do immediately.
Well, that would be good, and it'd be very helpful if you do that, and, you know, you could toss this around, and we've been through this before with redistricting, and there's a thousand ways to do it, but, you know, from what I can see, it looks like you've done a pretty good job.
Well, I've been doing this work a long time, I think I kind of know what will work and what won't, but again, I'm not trying to cram anything down anybody's throat. I want y'all to feel like it's, it works for your community. It's my community too, I still consider Plainview home, but I'm, I'm removed from it, so if there's anything about this that fends any local concerns, I hope it doesn't, that's not my intention by any stretch.
Well, I think everybody's aware of that, and we realize you're from here as well, so, yeah, if you, if you would just get us something on paper, we can kind of look at, well, that'd be helpful, and we'll go from there, discuss it.
Okay. I can get that to you here later today. Now, let's talk about timeline a little bit. As I said, the voting, opening of filing period, the legislature tried to push that back to November the 29th. Right now, under state laws that exist today, it's November the 13th. So that people who might want to run, who's up for election at this coming March?
2 and 4.
2 and 4, yes. As far as commissioners.
You know, I know the incumbents want to know that they're still in their precinct, but there, there's somebody out there who might want to run for that seat. We need to have a map available. We need to have a map available approved by no later than the 13th of November. Let me show you how much attention the legislature pays to the local government. They adopted a plan of legislation, Senate Bill 14, that extended the filing period deadline, opening of filing period to November the 29th. Why they put it that way? It could have taken immediate effect if they had drafted the legislation that way. But they drafted the legislation so that it requires a three-quarter or a two-thirds majority of both houses for it to take immediate effect. Well, it didn't. It was four votes short in the House of getting two-thirds. So then it said, well, then it goes to 91 days after the date the bill is approved by the House. Well, that falls on December the 2nd. So that's after the November 13th. So it doesn't become effective. And it therefore doesn't change the date. They knew that while the legislature was still in session and could have amended the bill. Their intention was to extend the opening date to give us more time. But they didn't, even though it was pointed out to them that that was a problem. They could have recalled it for another vote, reconsideration, and amended the bill. Maybe three votes would have gone the other way to help the government, but they didn't change it. So we're stuck with an early opening of the filing period. Personally, I have the opinion that as long as we get it done, and really in advance of the close of the filing period of December the 13th, we probably would be okay. But I would rather avoid the problem. I would rather adopt a plan before the 13th of November. So that may mean a call meeting to vote on it. I would get you a display map of a large enough scale that the people could see where those lines are. And then you could hold a public hearing. Normally, I would recommend a 10-day notice in the newspaper before such a hearing. But that probably is not doable. So I would think at least three days' public notice before the hearing. But that means, you know, trying to do something in the, between the 8th or 9th of November and the 13th, which falls on a Saturday. So with those deadlines in mind, what kind of dates do you think you can include it?
Well, I, I'm thinking we could have another call meeting early next week, which, when's the judge gonna be back, Mr.?
Friday. Friday.
He'll be here Friday?
Yes.
Well, why couldn't we have a call meeting after our work session Friday?
29?
Friday, the 5th?
The 29th.
I mean, tell me what that would have, what would we be discussing on the 29th? This plan?
Three days.
I say that again, Bob, I'm sorry.
What would we be doing on that 29th meeting that we're not doing right now?
We, he can't because we have to post it for three days.
Maybe the judge sees it?
Yes.
Unless you do an emergency one.
I, I wanted the judge to see it more than anything was, was my concern. I mean, I, I think it'd be all right if we didn't. But I mean, I'd like for him to as a courtesy.
Yeah. I'm booked until the evening hours on the 29th. I've got a hearing scheduled at 9:00, 1:00, 3:00.
Well, let me ask you this, Bob. What, what would work better for you? We're, we're pretty flexible.
I mean, I don't want it to be about me, but I'm booked pretty solid through the... Looking at my calendar, I've got stuff booked all the way through the 8th, 9th, 10th. But I've, I've got gaps in it. But doing another meeting other than today, it just is hard to, and then doing, you know, two more hearings make it very hard for me to do. But one more hearing, a public hearing, I can do easily enough. But, and I want to give Judge Moll that courtesy too. I can send him what I'm gonna be sending you all. If he has concerns about it, he can let me know. But if we want to do a workshop, another workshop on Friday the 5th, I've got room to do that.
Well, Bob, I just, I just got a message from the judge. And he, he's watching us here today. And, and he, he sent a message that conveyed that he's fine with what, what we have planned here, what, what your plan was.
Yeah. Well, could we maybe look at doing a Wednesday, the 10th of November for the public hearing at about 11 o'clock or so? Or 1 o'clock, whatever y'all think? I've got an opening that day between, I've only got one hearing scheduled that morning at 9 o'clock. So I could pretty much fill you in on the 10th, whenever you might want.
Can we do it at 11 o'clock?
Yes, sir.
Okay, let's set it for then, if that'll work for everybody.
10 to 11?
Yes, at 11 o'clock on the 10th.
All right, at 11 o'clock AM, November the 10th. Yeah.
You, you okay with that?
Oh, yeah. No, I'm, I'm just asking what's good.
Yeah.
Okay, I will, here's what I would do. Is I'll send you a demographic map. This was planned. And a kind of a zoom around all of the touching waters of the new districts with, so at a scale that you can see the street labels. The only areas of change is up here in between two and four, in the 24th to 28th street area. And then along, in this area right in here. I don't know that we, so those are the areas I'm gonna focus on. The rest of the city stays pretty much the same. You know, we were only moving a total of 800 people roughly around. So 800 people inside the city of Plainview is not that hard to do. So the areas that I'm gonna be sending you maps, I hope will be helpful to you along with the demographic data. And then I will also include more of what I guess I would call a, a zoom out showing, you know, where any changes anywhere else. We're concentrating here in Plainview. And I will show you sort of the big picture without the clutter and then zoom in. If anybody sees anything that they don't have clarity on, you will email me and tell me what you need, or call me and tell me what you need. I'll try to get that to you. I'm also gonna prepare a large format map of both the county as a whole and the city of Plainview that's zoomed in tight enough that all the streets are eligible, that you can put on poster board and have for your public hearing.
Okay, Bob, well, let's, I think that'll cover us pretty good for the sake of simplicity. The plan you have laid out there looks pretty good to me.
All right. The, I'll also be sending to you the orders and stuff that we need to have you sign. Have you acted already on your order to redistrict?
No, we have not.
You know, that is an order that, where you basically recognize that your boundaries as they exist need to be changed. I would recommend that be placed on the agenda for the 10th as well. I will get the agenda to you along with the orders that you need to have on your agenda for action and kind of walk you through it. My intention, if I can be there, but I don't think I can, is to be there personally. But if I can't be there personally, I would be available by Zoom to answer questions you or members of the public might have.
Okay. Does anybody have any other comments or questions for Bob?
No, sounds good.
Do, do you have anything further, Bob, that you'd like to go over with us today before we close?
No, I think that's all I need right now. I don't want you to feel, I tell you how much we gotta do so fast. And then I tell you, I don't want you to feel pressured, but...
Well, thanks, we really appreciate that.
I wish it was different. We got the data, we had a lot of trouble getting the data to work. We got, you know, they released the data to us August the 12th. And I, in prior years, the data's been clean enough that we could use it correctly. This year, because they were so late, since it's released early, what they call legacy data. Why they call it that, I don't know. But it's the raw data. When I say raw, I mean, we have to be, build formulas, map the spreadsheet and software formulas to extract those populations in the proper ratios. And that proved to be harder than we thought it would be. And then trying to subtract out the prison populations and identifying the prison populations. And it just had turned into be a nightmare. And so we've been slow getting all of the data to where we were comfortable, but it was right. So we could have started on this earlier had we had clean data, but we didn't have clean data. So that's an excuse. But that's the reality we've been grappling with since August the 12th. We've only been able to really get this work in serious order started about the first, about the 10th of October. So that's where we are now. So we're, we've gone around to the places we thought we could go around to. Because I've got more experience doing it than anybody else. I've got more counties loaded up. And I've just had to hell of getting around to everybody. So I had to resort to Zoom meetings. And I appreciate your patience on that.
Well, I think we've all learned in the last year or so that nothing's routine or normal anymore.
Well, you know, it's one of the silver linings, I guess, of COVID is that it allowed us to introduce some new technology that makes meetings feasible in the era of COVID. But it also makes open up opportunities to, for us in doing a redistricting. Last time, we tried to go around to each county physically. But it took us a good month to make a circuit over the counties and cities and schools we were assigned. And that means it took about three months of time. Well, we had three months of time 10 years ago. We've only had about, so far, about one month, six weeks. And so you cannot travel to this state, as big as it is, in six weeks and cover the bases. So Zoom has allowed us to do more work more efficiently. But it's not, it's not the way I would prefer to do it. That being said, I appreciate your patience and understanding. And I'll get all of this stuff coming to you here shortly.
All right, thank you.
All right, Bob, well, we appreciate you joining us today. And we'll look forward to getting those other, other papers in so we can review it a little bit and set this up.
Any other questions?
I think that covers us.
I don't know if you could tell. Sometimes when I zoom in, I have a pheasant sitting on top of my head.
We see. It almost looked like you got hair up there.
Now, that, that pheasant was back in the day what we used to do on a pheasant hunting in Hale County. And that, that came from my last pheasant hunting trip. All right, gentlemen, I appreciate your time. There will be some work I'll need to do with your elections administrator. Who, who I need to be in touch with on that?
Latrice.
It would be Latrice Kemp, our county clerk.
County clerk?
Yes.
Okay, Latrice. What we're gonna be needing to do is conforming the voting boxes that are addressed or affected by this boundary change, to conform those. We can do that after. But we need to get a basic map adopted so people can know when, if they're eligible to run, if they want to. I know you incumbents don't, would just be happy not to ever let anybody think about running against you. But we need to get that done first. And then we'll have a little bit of time later.
Bob, I'm not the voter registrar. So are you gonna need his input as far as the lines?
Yeah, I will need to get a, your voter registration list, your poll list, sent to me in an Excel spreadsheet. And I can possibly help reconcile the voter registration list with using my software. But what I will try to do is set up a time where I can visit with you personally and maybe the voter registrar could sit in on that at your end. We can set up another Zoom. And we can help, you can help me make some judgment calls on how you want those new voting boxes configured. Won't be much change. Both, we, we were lucky in Hale. It was pretty easy to make those changes. But like I say, that, that change was relatively easy to do. Okay, any other questions? If not, I'm gonna sign off.
I think we're good, Bob.
Okay, thank you all, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Do we, are we good to close? Okay, well, that will conclude our special call meeting today at 1:49 PM. And there being nothing further, we'll stand adjourned.